Oh shit. So, um. So we have follow up on these three policies that we've been discussing for years, it feels like. And, uh, I mean, my, my understanding of the plan going forward was that we needed to schedule a meeting with general counsel.
Right, no, gentleman.
Well done. Okay. Wadley.
Stop.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. Um, but, uh, has there been any more discussion like that? Cause I know we, it was still up in the air a little bit about as to whether it would be.
So we did, Allison talked a little bit before the last board meeting. We discussed general assurances.
Oh, okay.
She kind of touched on this and I know you were not there.
I wasn't there.
There were, there were quite a few people who were out that day. That was the day we had, we had nobody on that whole side of the board.
Well, Jen, you was over there.
Jenny was over by herself.
Oh, that's right.
Ish was not there, Carrie was not there, Pip was not there, but that was the day we had Allison and it was, we sort of rolled from this into general assurances because again, there's overlapping themes.
Yeah.
Um, but from the last updates, as far as what's happening in Concord, because there are a number of bills that will impact J V A B and then the RSA one eighty-six eleven, which folds us into J L P. And there were four bills active in either the House or the Senate that could become law. And at last check, which was this morning, there is a June fifth slate for them to be voted on. And all of them are listed as ought to pass. So the bills are H V ten, um, S B seventy-two dash F as in Frank, N as in Nancy. And they include language that follows, and I'll just read what it says. Um, they give a definition of infringement, um, the violation or infringement of any of the rights described in this chapter, knowingly withholding of truthful information required to be disclosed to child's parent pursuant to this chapter, knowingly providing misleading or intentionally inaccurate information required to be disclosed to or forbidden to be withheld from a child's parent pursuant to this chapter, or the denial of the existence of information required to be disclosed to a parent pursuant to this chapter when the information is known to the school or school personnel inquired by a parent. And then it also references the parental rights statute, which says that all parental rights are reserved to the parents of minor children in the state without obstruction or interference from any school or school personnel. The rights of a parent regarding his or her child or children include, but are not limited to the following, the right to receive truthful and accurate information about the child in response to a written request, not otherwise protected from disclosure by this chapter. And there is a list of violations. No school or school personnel shall infringe upon any of the parental rights set forth in RSA one eighty-nine dash B three, unless the infringement is supported by clear and convincing evidence and is narrowly tailored to address the compelling state interest. Any parent claiming violation of any provision of this chapter may bring an action for declaratory or injunctive relief or both and monetary damages against the school. If a parent prevails in any such court action, the court shall award to the parents his or her reasonable attorney fees and court costs, including any such attorney fees and court costs incurred in an appeal to the Supreme Court. And then it goes on to talk about procedure upon determination of the existence of a compelling state interest warranting infringement upon parental rights. Upon determining that a compelling state interest requires a school or school personnel to infringe upon any of the parental rights described in this chapter, such school person, that personnel, challenge immediately notify his or her principal or designee of his or her intent to infringe upon parental rights in a written report that identifies each of the articulatable facts that the person believes justifies the infringement of parental rights. Such reports shall identify the individual parental rights that the school or school personnel proposes to infringe upon and the basis for such infringement. The report shall also state the anticipated duration for the continued impingement of parental rights and all steps the school or school personnel proposes to take to address the compelling state interest. The infringement of parental rights shall continue for no longer than is necessary to address the compelling state interest. And then finally, school board notification of parent rights. Every school board shall annually provide a written notice to all parents of minors in the district of their rights as set forth in RSA one eighty-nine dash B three. So that's all connected to those first two bills.
Okay.
Then we've got state bill ninety-six, which will create a new statutory obligation for teachers to respond to written inquiries from parents about material information about their child. Uh, they're going to call this the Honesty and Transparency in Education Act. And there will be a new section called Communication Between Teachers and Parents. They will amend RSA one eighty-nine by inserting after section thirteen C, the following new section, one eighty-nine thirteen D, Communications Between Teachers and Parents. Educators credentialed by the department, by the New Hampshire Department of Education shall have a duty to respond to written inquiries by parents requiring material information relating to their child enrolled in that educator school. Such response to a written request shall be sent within ten business days of its receipt and be answered completely anonymously to the extent permitted by state or federal law. If in the good faith determination of the credential holder, such complete non-responds to a request would put the student at imminent risk of physical harm, abuse, neglect, such credential holder shall file a report with the Department of Health and Human Services within forty-eight hours of determination and may withhold the information that creates the risk in accordance with RSA one sixteen-nine C thirty. On or before June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, the State Board of Education shall adopt rules pursuant to RSA five forty-one A, amending the Code of Ethics and Conduct to New Hampshire educators relative to this section. Violation of this section shall be considered a violation of the Code of Conduct for New Hampshire educators and subject to investigation in accordance with administrative rules against that credential holder. This act shall take effect January first, twenty twenty-six. And I believe there's already been something that went to Kelly Ayotte about a change to the, either it was the Code of Ethics or the Code of Conduct for educators already. So she's already got that, I don't know if she signed it, but it already went to her about educators having a duty to parents, specifically to parents being added in there. Then we have House Bill two thirty-five, which is the one that went to her, which expands the Code of Conduct to include responsibility to parents along with students. And that one already went to her, I don't know if she signed that or not.
What was that?
It was House Bill two thirty-five.
And it was Code of Conduct.
Code of Conduct, so that the educators have a responsibility to parents along with students.
Taking this seriously.
Yep, so I'm just gonna, what I'll do is I'll copy all of this in my notes here and I will send this to policy committee. So we can have this in front of you.
So this is all pending legislation, right? None of it is passed.
All of it is pending and as of this morning, when I checked, um, it was all listed as ought to pass. So some is the state bill, some is the House bill.
You say state, does that mean senate bill?
I'm sorry, senate bill, yes.
And they have to do that by June fifth, is that what you said?
June fifth is the date, I think, that it's going in front of the body to vote.
Well, I mean, for me, I guess I'm, I'm left in the same place where I think, we're left with this, um, decision between sort of like protecting our teachers and protecting our students. I still wonder if using, I mean, I think, I think they're just, it seems like they're just layering line, language as much as possible to get to, you know, a complete transparency. But I also feel like we're not, we're not doing anything in our policies to avoid transparency because if, again, that statement of required by law, if any of this is required by law, then we have to disclose it, so. Um, so it, for me, it doesn't change a whole lot about where our policies stand. But I also think it still would be good to have that conversation with Wadley Star. That sounds like we sort of already had it, but, I mean, I don't know, I don't know what it's gonna change, except that we could ask for some more specifics or. I had, I had asked Zach if we could get some specific language from them, on how they would, how they could, like, if there was sort of an in-between, like, rather than scrapping what's in our policy, um, or keeping it just as it is, is there some in-between that they feel like, help, you know, put us in a better position to protect our, protect ourselves, but also keep privacies in place for the parents? And I don't know if they, I don't, I think he said he was reluctant to ask, or they were reluctant to give language.
They are reluctant to give language because the last sort of notes I have from Allison is we continue to recommend that the language in J V A B be clarified and that would be lines forty-six through forty-nine, the given ones that we continue to sort of raffle with about what that means. And I think with the layers of language that I just read through, I wonder about how we would be able to ensure that our teachers are feeling that they're in a good place to understand what they can and cannot do.
Mm-hmm.
And the training evolved with that because we had talked at some point about being legally required to do so. And then the last time we met, we talked about how that would need to look and what kind of training would be provided. The training would have to be prepared, we want to make sure that the training is in line with law in order to equip our educators, all of our educators. So it's not just the teachers. And so just the point of clarification of Code of Ethics and Code of Conduct that are for educators technically cover anybody who's employed by a school. So that's, it's our custodians, it's our food lunch people, it's everybody. The credentialing piece, which they specifically call out in something that I read, impacts anybody who holds certification from the state. So it would bind everybody to the law, but the risk of losing credentials would be only folks who have state certification through the Department of Ed.
So, I mean, how is this different though from anything else with you? Because presumably we're training all of our teachers on current law all the time, right? Like, they're supposed, there's a lot of things.
Absolutely, definitely. There's, it's very nuanced. So that piece that I even just read through about writing a report about what the, there's a lot of nuance in that when, and so for instance, when we train our teachers in no intent, which is the child abuse statute, that everybody's a mandated reporter and if you suspect it, that's very clear. It's very clear that if you sus, if your child comes up to you, a student comes up to you and says, you know, when I go home, my, my parent is beating me. And they, they come in with welts or bruises, it's very clear, you, you pick up the phone, you dial V C F, you file the report. There's a lot of nuanced language, there's a lot of like, and you must file a report, and you, there, there's, it's not as straightforward and it's loopholey. Where I feel like if we are not clear in the policy that we set, we could risk one of our teachers falling through one of these loopholes. But then I believe when we met initially with Wadley Star, when Dean and Allison were on the Zoom, and I forgot who was there, Byron, you came in late. If you were not there, Lisa, I think, was there, Nancy, you were there. They talked about the, um, what, what the board and what the school, the school district would have to pay in order to cover that sort of situation.
Maybe this is quite right, but, um, did we change our policy, J V A B, um, in those lines? Does it change that dynamic in any kind of material way in terms of like the specific knowledge of the law that teachers would have to, and all the nuanced reporting and things? And just because, does that make sense to the question? I mean, um, if we modify J V A B, you know, based on recommendations, I don't know if that dynamic changes in terms of, if I'm understanding what you're saying around teachers having to, you know, could be out of compliance because there's so many specific steps in.
And that's why, and that's why the NHSBA is recommending J L P instead. Because if you look at J L P, it says that the district will not adopt policies or procedures to withhold information. And it goes on, district personnel will not discourage notification. Like, it's very clear about you won't do this, you won't do that. And it doesn't have all of the other language that the rest of J V A B has that could exist in practice and procedure, but not in policy. Um, J L P is very clear about responding to that whole, and this was back in September, this is before any of this other stuff is coming, which, um, they're on a tear up in Congress with a lot of new regulations and things that I know there's gonna be, Paula and I were just talking about this today, that the spring update is gonna be huge. And there's gonna be a lot of policies that we're gonna have to, and there's probably gonna be training attached to that, all kinds of stuff. Um, J L P is looking, I think, to be very, um, deliberate in what it's saying and has simplified it so that we're in, we're in alignment with the law without having to read through a lot of if, then's, and buts.
Is the, um, is the intent of J L P and the, and the disclosure of information um, meant to be all inclusive of like proactive uh, information as in, um, educators, you need to be proactive in, you know, expressing whatever specific information to, to guardians. It seems like it's all reactive to requests, right?
That's exactly what it is.
Okay, so, um, would if, if making a change to J V A, because right now in J V A B, those lines talks about.
Which lines, I, forty?
Forty-six to forty, yeah, forty-five to forty-nine, where it's like, uh, shouldn't, you know, um, should not disclose information. Um, if we just, what would be the effect of, um, changing that language to say that the school personality should not proactively disclose information? Um, does that, um, sort of sit in the middle in terms of, um, it's not in conflict with J L P, not that we even have J L P, but the statute behind it and that, um, it's, uh, what it's specifically targeting is that, um, parents wouldn't be, you know, seeking out to disclose information. Um, but also still has the caveat, unless legally required. Um, it's just the, and I don't know if that, um, could be something that people would be agreeing, I'm just trying to think out loud about, um, ways we can be. Cause I, I agree with Pip, I don't, I think, you know, unless legally required is a pretty large caveat and like should cover most things. So I'm not sure that the J V A B is out of compliance, um, but even why, but even more caveat, I mean, it's saying information might be subject to expression, you know, will not, should not be proactively disclosed. Um, school personnel should not proactively disclose the information that remain, et cetera, right? Um, and I think that, although my, my, that, um, where I think that's a little bit unfortunate is it sort of like makes the paragraph somewhat, somewhat meaningless, right? Um, but it would, it dance even further away from, um, the statute around and what's in sort of J L P. And then, yeah, so that's my comment on J V A B, if there was a path we could take, but, um, and then is the recommendation still that, that, I, I, we had, we had this conversation so many times. For J L P, is the, we're in a place now where the recommendation from NHSBA that we should have this policy and we don't have this policy, right?
J L P.
J L P.
Yes.
Right. Um, but I remember going back, going through the, the statute and there didn't seem to be a specific requirement that we have it. Um.
If you looked at one eighty-six eleven.
What, is that statute?
Yep, I X dash E, so nine E.
Can you say that number one?
One eighty-six eleven. And then capital I, capital X, so nine dash E.
Okay.
What does it say?
Require school districts to adopt a policy on parental notification of changes. This is where we got into the conversation a couple of meetings ago, in students' mental and emotional well-being or related services.
I remember, right.
A school district may not adopt policies, procedures, or student support forms that prohibit school district personnel from answering questions from a parent about, so that's where J L P responds to that.
And I, I just, I just disagree that that's what J V A B does. I don't think it's, it's, I don't think, um, cause, cause of the, the, the large caveat in that.
Well, but the piece that I think hangs us up with J V A B, you look at line, well, forty-eight and forty-nine, just to make it make sense, unless legally required to do so, or unless the student has authorized such disclosure.
Right.
So you are saying that unless the student, who could be as young as six, tells you that it's okay to tell their parents, you are not allowed to do that.
No, but it's an or instead of.
Yeah, it's or.
Yeah.
Or if it's legally required to do so.
Yeah.
True. But I think, but that's the clause that I think that we're adopting a policy that may not adopt, that prohibits school personnel. The policy is saying, because the child is prohibiting the teacher, the guidance counselor from saying anything.
Not if it's required by law.
Way around. I think it's, I think it's that the student can give them permission to do it, so.
But the student can also say no.
Yeah, I, I think, I actually.
I think it stands if, I, well, I, I read it differently, that if, regardless of what the kid says, that they're not supposed to disclose stuff unless it's legally required to do so. But if the kid allows it or offer, I mean, is accepting of the disclosure, then they can. So it kind of, so, so the child.
So then.
Override.
But this policy that NHSBA won't even support anymore, so J V A B.
Yeah.
They're looking at it as saying that the school, this is a policy that prohibits personnel from answering questions from a parent.
Well, I think they're not looking at it that way. I think they're looking at it as too controversial because not all, all communities in New Hampshire agree with. I don't think they're actually saying that there's a problem with the policy. I think they're just saying they can't support it because their overall constituency doesn't feel the same about it. But, but they, I mean, I don't think.
I think the, the long enough student has authorized disclosure actually struggles to have meaning next to, um, unless legally required to do so, because he, you know.
I think, I think you're right.
I, I don't think it, I think legally required to do so just trumps, and so I don't know why that's, yeah.
Well, that's what I was saying, I think if, if the child encourages the teacher to share it, then, then they can share it. So I think that's why it's there. You know, if the child wants help talking to a parent, for instance, then the, then the teacher is allowed to talk to the parent.
But they're allowed to anyway because of the law.
Well, whether or not the law said they could. You know what I mean? Cause we're, now, now the law says they can, but they, they might not before.
Uh.
I think it's sort of, I think that's actually in there to protect the student.
And then if you look right at nine forty-six, school personnel should not disclose information. And I know we're saying unless legally required to do so, but whether it was a meeting ago or two meetings ago, we talked about how do we, how do we keep on top of all the laws? And if I just read through four potential bills and all of those sort of nuances.
Right. Well, here's the thing, is that this policy specifically speaks to gender identity, right? And there is nothing in, I know some people might argue this, but technically and legally, there is nothing in that policy or in that legislation that speaks to gender identity. So this, they're really not even connected, in my opinion. I mean, if, if there's a problem with well-being based on the gender identity, then that's something that the, the teacher can still talk to parents about. But we're merely talking about, in this policy, I think, we're probably just talking about like what pronouns the kid uses. So to me, they're not even, again, not even connected. And I think you can definitely make that argument legally.
I did say, everybody remember this memo we got from Erin Bachem after that last meeting we had? We had the community members come out.
Yeah.
If I read this correctly, what she's saying is teachers have to abide by the law.
Mm-hmm.
It doesn't matter what the school board policy is, the law comes first.
Yeah, well, the school board policy says the law comes first.
But then if you say, or unless the student has authorized such disclosure, unless legally required, period.
Yeah, my, yeah, I, I agree, I agree, yeah, yeah.
Take that, take that out, it's, the, the teachers are afraid that if they don't abide by the law, they're gonna lose their certification.
Yeah.
And, and staff, and like you just said, other people that have certifications. It's really not just teachers. So that's unless legally required to do so and take out the rest of that sentence, cause what this is saying is unless legally required, or if the student doesn't want that disclosure, that, that's equal to the, what the law is.
No, I think it's, I think it's saying the opposite though. I think it's saying, or if the student wants to disclose it.
So then the law doesn't take effect because the student doesn't want.
But maybe we could put it in a different sentence, so it's not.
I just think it's a double affirmative and it doesn't like mean anything.
But I think it does, because what if, what if the law is not, doesn't reference what the student wants to disclose? But the student says, hey, can you tell my parents this? And it's not required by law, but the, the student wants help in talking to the parent about it. Then, then you're releasing the, the, the teacher.
I don't think, I don't think we should have a policy that says we should have, we should force a teacher to have a conversation with the parent.
No, I don't think that's what he's doing. It's giving them permission to, by the student.
But they already have permission.
So in other words, the student gets to choose if, like, they do want to. I, like, I, I'm reading it the opposite way that I think everybody else is. And I think it's important for that reason. Because what it's saying is even if it's not legally required to do so, and that's why it's or, not and, then, then the student can authorize the, the, the teacher to, to talk to the parents.
But yes. I just, given the state, the state of the law, I struggle to find the specific use case or condition where that branch of the logic would like activate, like.
Well, because we're saying the, the school personnel should not disclose this information. And so.
Unless legally required to do so.
But what if they're not legally required to do so and the student still wants them to disclose it? That's what, that's the scenario I'm getting at.
But is there information that's described that's outside of that condition?
Yes, their gender identity and expression. Because what, what we're saying right now is that J L P doesn't actually address gender identity, right? So there is no law that says you have to disclose students' gender identity to parent. But we're, but our policy says you shouldn't.
Right.
So I think if a student wants that disclosed, they should be able to tell the teacher that it's okay to disclose it.
So, um.
I think, I think what might be simpler is to put it in a separate like sentence so that it doesn't feel like it's competing with the law, because that's not at all how I'm seeing it. And I think that's why the word or is used there. But I can see those, it feels confusing because it feels like it's allowing the student to ask them not to disclose stuff, which is not what we're intending to.
So in, in a, in a condition where there's some information that the teacher has, um, and, uh, it's confidential.
Yes, but not protected by law.
But not protected by law. Okay, then the student has agency on whether or not that information is disclosed.
Yes, that is exactly how I.
So I think I could, I could see that as a independent statement, right?
Yeah.
Um, in the case where a teacher has confidential information that is not required to be disclosed by law.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
What would that be?
Exactly, well, no, exactly, yeah. I, I.
Their gender identity. It could be anything, but I'm just using that as an example.
For, I think.
But I, to be honest, I don't, I don't wanna add language to this policy. If we're gonna change anything, I think it's dangerous to add anymore. So if you guys feel, I'll feel strongly about, I think it's, I think it's gonna happen in either way, but I think this actually protects the teacher a little bit. Um, but I can see it's not being read that way by anyone, so I think we can let it go. I don't, I think. I don't, I think it's more dangerous to try to add new language about things that are confidential and trying to beat your teacher, or beat your parents. But I appreciate your effort to try to do.
I wonder about how, let's say, what, the twenty first, so we have like three weeks to June fifth? Feels like, I agree.
Yeah, I agree, yeah, totally, yeah.
I wonder what it's gonna look like when we've got those four bills that come up. And if they're marked ought to pass, ought to pass, ought to pass, so they pass.
Mm-hmm.
They land on the governor's desk. She signs them into law. So then there's gonna be policies that come from those laws that specifically state all of the things that I read through. That will more. More specifically declare what is and isn't allowed.
That's a good point.
Because so, so if we think about our own timeline.
Yeah.
So today's the twenty first, we have a meeting on the twenty seventh. We don't have a meeting till June tenth. Our next policy committee meeting is June.
I have it.
Sixteenth, okay, June eleventh. Are we going to be in a place? From July to say we're ready to go with this when the laws could definitely be saying, okay, all the work that you guys just did in. May and June, I think they're throwing the garbage.
Good point.
Yeah, I just, I, and I'm not saying that for any other purpose except that we, we've got a limited amount of time we all have limited bandwidth. But I wonder if we wait to see how this shakes out, because I think we've been waiting, because we know that this is churning up there. There's, there's a lot of things you're kind of waiting on. I mean, are we gonna have car inspection, like all these things? Like you're just waiting, cell phone, the cell phone policy is sort of sitting there. Are we waiting to see where, which direction they're stepping in? And what sample policies could come from NHSBA, good, better, and different? So that then we have a more clear idea of which way we need to proceed.
Yep, I'm with you on that, I think that's.
Because I think there was something else that Dean had said, was at some point, this might not be even a decision for us to make. Like when they changed graduation requirements. Well, you might say they don't need this, and then the policy comes there, though there's a law that says now they do need this. Well, okay, we have to do this because now the law says we have to have them do this.
And yesterday on the news, I heard the cell phone, you don't take it, you, you put it in lock all day long at school. That's with the law, that's with the proposed.
And I think there's two different ones with similar language, but there's like a little shift to, but like even that one, which we've got on for, that's upcoming. I just don't want us to go through a huge exercise.
It's upcoming, I thought it, I thought we were talking about today.
That's for review, that, that's why I said it's upcoming.
Oh, I thought her review meant today.
Okay, yes.
It does?
Yeah.
Okay, so this, what we're doing today is just follow up. I mean, what we're doing right now.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um.
Well, I think that makes sense to wait for June fifth and see. By then we should know with the law, the new law is.
For sure. Instead of all this, you know, we've got four bills, and are they gonna merge them? Are they gonna come up with one huge statement? Okay, what, what is that gonna look like in practice? Because there could be laws, and we've seen this happen before. Where the law says to do this, and in practice, it's like, I don't know how we're supposed to do that.
I'd just like to add one little minor syntax comment, which is um, about. The law, the, the um RSA that you read.
Which one?
Oh, I don't remember. But I think it's from.
Yeah, one eighty nine. One eighty six eleven, yeah, nine.
Um, I think it says, we shall not adopt a policy. And then blah, 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 right? So the reality.
That. My chance of policy already on the books.
I mean, if you read it that way, we're not doing anything wrong.
Yeah?
Okay, so I'm just saying, no.
But I want to say, I think, then it goes on, cannot adopt procedures, so like the procedure policy argument that I like to have. All I find about, unless it's a policy, that's procedures, so can't do that either, but.
Um, okay, so does everyone agree that we should hold off on doing anything?
Till we know more?
Yeah. You have a bar, bar, are you okay with that?
Yeah, I'm fine, I'm fine, yeah. No, no, no. No, uh, I think if we can get away with doing nothing, like this project.
Yeah, we've got nothing, we're waiting, waiting is something. We did already. Waiting is a verb. Waiting something.
Okay.
So are we focusing on J B A B and J L P?
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's the, and I would say J I C C too.
Is this? It's J J I C.
Yeah, I know, it's been wrong in this. J J I C, okay. Um. So, yeah, I mean, do you feel like we need to discuss that separately, or do you wanna wait?
I wonder if there was that change.
Well, N H I A A has made that change, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm concerned about. And our involvement in sports.
Do you think we should do that now? Is the state coming up with us law now, aren't they?
Um, what's your concern, sir?
Well, I know that N H I A A had pulled their statement.
Yep.
And they were waiting to see if they could find that anywhere.
I have quite the other question.
Yeah, I think he's.
But I was wondering if there was a law on the books that's gonna address that specifically. I don't think there is, is there?
Mm-hmm. Because they had in. Twenty twenty four, they passed House Bill twelve oh five, which was RSA one ninety three forty one.
Is this new? What's, what we have here from NHSBA? Is there something that's? Been changed? In their.
Solicited priority. This is now a priority required by law policy.
That's what's changed for that? Oh, it wasn't already required, okay.
So from Jeff Collins. N H I A voted to suspend bylaw article two, section twenty one, since the passage of the passage of RSA one ninety three forty one. Had the effect of supplanting the bylaw, and specifically provides that the State Board of Education. Each local school board and each governing body shall adopt and enforce policies to ensure compliance with this subdivision. So RSA one ninety three forty one says.
Was it RSA one?
RSA one ninety three forty one. Talks that um. Schools grades five through twelve, it would apply to an interschool athletics sport sponsored by a public school. Whose students or teams compete against the public school must be expressly designated. Based on the biological sex at birth, males, men or boys, females, women or girls, or colored or mixed. Athletic teams or sports designated for females, women, or girls shall not be open to students of the male sex. And that's, so that's the, what the RSA says.
Yeah.
Then we, we need to adopt the policy and to comply with that, so that's great.
Right, is that passed into law?
Yes, this was effective August eighteen, twenty twenty four.
Oh, okay, I remember that. So because of that. This is the sample policy that we were to put us in alignment with the law so that. Students competing against other schools. N H I A is, you know, lead organizing, organization group. That we can continue to have our students form teams to compete.
So do we need a new policy, or is it the Dresden?
This is the one, A J I C is the policy. Which we don't have yet.
The one that the New Hampshire School Boards Association has recommended.
Well, this certainly is acting opposition to J B A B.
This, the policy is eligibility for, oh, it's generally eligible for your.
I mean, what if, what if we just adopted a policy that sort of, that used the general information, like um. All standards of eligibility, you know, that, that noted that we were under um, that we, that we. Use the guidelines of the N H I A A and for everything. In that way, we wouldn't have to like build into our. Power policy, all this ridiculous stuff about photographs of children when they're babies. Because in my, that's the strangest way to apply for a high school sports team. Um. But we would still be aligned with. The requirements.
Before we would just say, just refer to the N H I A guideline without stating it.
But it's also gonna take away some of our stuff about um, physicals. I look at like the neuroscience test.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I think we should.
There, there's a lot more in here, like we got fees, we've got academic. No, academic standards.
Yeah, I, I'm surprised we don't already have that. Like, yeah, policy, procedure wise, do we adhere to that?
We do with procedures, but again, you put it in policy, and it's.
Do we want it in policy, I guess? Do you think so?
I think it makes sense to hold high standards for students.
I think we. I think we have to change J B A B and that stuff to me.
In what section?
It's just. On, conflict with the law.
Which part?
In J B A B H, where the student should be permitted to propagate initial evidence with a manner consistent with their gender identity. Is not what the law says.
Mm-hmm.
And that's a, what we say, unless other, like, unless law conflicts with that something? Because, I mean, I, well, I don't know, I think. Yeah, I think, I think, you know, I agree with you in terms of just like how we handle it, because our, you know, to date, our. District has been handling this based on J B A B.
Yeah.
You know, and I know there haven't been that many cases of it, but, but in theory, that's how they're handling it. And so. Um. So. The question is, are we going to, are we gonna suddenly switch how we do that?
I think we have to.
Oh, it's just not, wouldn't complain with the law. We can, we can keep the policy as it is. And, you know, the, if there's, if there's the consequences or repercussions, I guess we have to sort of bear that, but um. I mean, I.
Maybe they follow us.
Yeah, yeah. My sort of pragmatic take is that um, I think it's, I think it's. We would make a change in A B, specifically on the flag to oppose force on H, I would just remove H from J B A B.
Mm-hmm.
Um. You know, not enthusiastic about it certainly, but I, I just, I.
Would you put anything in its place or just remove it?
So there's. As, as I understand the statute. It's not talking about anything else in J B A B. Um, relative, so J B A B general, right? It's not about specifically sports. We're talking about the. Statute around school athletics. So the things that in our, in the J B A B around school athletics that are in conflict with the laws about. School athletics, or the changes, I think, for that would be. Um. If we want to be in compliance. So I think.
I.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm still in favor of holding off on changes to J B A B because I think. As we've noted, there's gonna be, there's gonna be more, a lot more to discuss about that. So I wonder about just. Doing something about this policy right now, but not.
So.
I don't know.
They only have two policies that are in conflict with each other, and like, I don't know what that, I don't know what that means.
Well. Any other option is again, I, I don't know, I'm just reluctant to dive back into that policy, because. If we're just making that one change, then there's probably other changes that we wanna consider too. But I, I do see your point, that they're in conflict. I mean, are you in favor of, of adopting what this sample policy says in terms of registration?
I think, so I'm looking at the law and the piece that you picked out about the photos and that, that's not in the law.
Yeah.
So that.
Yeah.
That's, that paragraph, if the submitted. All it says in the law. If birth certificate does not appear to be original, the student must provide other evidence, and the student or student's parent must pay costs associated with providing evidence required. So we could take out that such evidence may include.
Yes.
And just say that they have to have other evidence, but could be a, you know, genetic test results. I mean, there, there's, but that they have to pay for those costs. No different than what we say that, you know, if you want to participate in. I don't know, something else, you have to provide paid costs for that.
Is there anything in the statute of the policy that talks about um, like the inevitable? Case where someone is questioning somebody's gender and like, under what, under, like, under what? Yeah.
Yeah, it will not say that in law, that, I mean, they just talk about what is required. So when, so here's general, which talks about N H I A, then it's registration, you need the emergency form, you need the parental consent, you need the fee.
So.
You need the birth certificate, which we could, that first paragraph under there, and then cross out that such evidence. They need a physical, make sure that they're healthy. Here's the academic, the rest of it, I think, makes sense and flows.
Mm-hmm.
There's a school now, when folks sign up for athletics, require, and these sort of, they just check a box, and they're like, I'm playing on this. In this division.
So, from my understanding, and again, Tom would be the one to talk about this, but if they're signing up to play basketball.
Yeah.
They sign up for basketball, and they go through a lot of this. It's like, okay, are you registered?
Yeah.
All right, here's the tryouts, all right, are you varsity, are you J, JV? Like, all of those things happen, but there's nothing. That sort of backs it, I think that. Required, like, all of that, but again, there's nothing that sort of backs it, that if something happened, I mean, we require. So we talked about at one point, um, the defibrillators.
Hmm.
We require those things, but I don't think there's too many other places where we say you have to have a physical. That sort of backs it up, that the, that the school department and that the board has said, you have to show that you're healthy. Because, yeah, things happen, but like, this sort of gives us the rest of that backup about. Permission slip, like, yeah, you want, like, where, wherever you're going every Tuesday, I don't want going to basketball. Well, you, you're supposed to be home and babysitting, like, I didn't say you could go play basketball, those little things that happen. So I think that this. This provides us with all of that additional sort of support, the academic piece, which I think. Gives a statement for us about what we believe that our student salaries should be, that we're not. This is not professional athletes, we've got student salaries, or student athletes, salary athletes. I like that that's in here. I like that that's in here. I mean, it gives, again, it bolsters that. Because you think about high school students who might be. Running the candle at ball events, like. How do we support them? To do that, to provide those things. It provides for eligibility for our students, uh, students on IEPs. Provides them some support as well. So there's other pieces in here that I think are valuable to have there.
I was, I'm surprised that. In two.
Roman numeral two, recommended language.
Not, so it doesn't make any time like to the intramural sports, it's just. Each interest class is.
Infomercials.
Is there.
Falls under extracurricular.
Is the law, is the law such that like? So I know in some sports. There's like a protected. Girls division, and then there's an open division. Which is generally, so what's interesting about this language is that it. Includes.
Intramural.
Well, no, well, from, from girl, like, like a, for example. Like a girl pitcher on a boys' baseball team, which is a thing that happens. I mean, well, other, you know, kickers in football and like other positions too, I mean, like, that's not uncommon. It seems like the cultural. Intent of some of this is around preventing. Trans girls from playing on those, so it's kind of interesting that this is sort of like fully.
I, I agree with you.
Yeah.
But if there's, I mean.
Yeah.
Language is extremely transphobic and just. Consider this.
I think NHIA probably would look at some of those other cases, like that you talked about, like a pitcher.
Yeah.
Or kicker, that might be on a case by case basis too.
But this is, this is like, this is, there's no case by case, this is, this is like very clear. Any grade five, because we did it, boys or girls, the team strategy for the boys was not be open to girls. And teams as girls not be open to boys, so like, no room for that. Right?
Right, and the other thing is that in the case where like. There's a sport that's only provided for one sex or the other, like, that means girls can't play football, like. That's not cool, in my opinion, I mean.
Yeah.
You know, like, that's not, that doesn't exist for girls, so. I, I don't know, I think it's, I do think it's limiting in that way as well, even beyond the trans athlete piece.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that seems like a separate conversation, not sure why it's encoded in here. Is, yeah.
But it's the law, correct? So are we gonna go against the law?
But is.
I mean, I.
Yeah. No, what I'm. Is that the law, though?
And interscholastic sport activity or club athletic teams sponsored by a public school or a private school. Who students or teams compete against a public school. Must be expressly designated as one of the following, based on the biological sex at birth. Of intended participants, males, women, or boys. Females, women, or girls, or coed or mixed.
Oh, I see, so you could, you could designate.
You could designate the team as a coed. Baseball team.
But would that, at the, essentially, you'd have to like, at the end, at all of the cities, all of the.
Not all. My, my understanding is they would compete against, so if we would, would have a coed baseball team.
Yeah.
Maybe Timberland's got one, and so you play Timberland, so that it's. A match or niche.
I, I wanna, I wanna hear from our athletic director.
That's true.
Yeah.
I gotta just say from personal, this reminds me of when I used to play coed softball.
Yeah.
And they would have to put three women in a row on the batting order. Just to, oh, no, I'm sorry, if you didn't have three women, you would take an automatic out. Do you know how offensive that is to women? Just to say, just especially from the person who got more home runs than anyone else on the team, like, that's not cool either, but this is what this reminds me of. It's like, because if, if we use that logic of like working with other coed teams. It's. It, what it means is that it's gonna sacrifice the.
I hear you.
Like the quality of the.
But if we have a football team and Dover doesn't, we can't play Dover. That, that I know is the way that Kaz has it set up. You, you can only play the teams that are equal.
Right.
So you wouldn't have a girls' basketball team playing. Boys' basketball.
But see, see, that's sort of.
I hear you. I, I hear what you're saying. But this is again, and, and Kaz could write a memo, another one about this, but it's my understanding from what he said that it's. It's match to match. That's the way NHIA sets it up.
Yes. It's not, I just think what's inherent underneath that is an assumption that girls aren't as good at sports as boys, and that's bothersome to me. That's the society we live in. So. Anyway. So I hear what you're wanting is to include. Is to include, to put, to, to adopt a policy that at least includes some of this, so that we have some parameters.
I would recommend that, I mean, I'm just looking at like the academic, that number one we, we wouldn't need. Because there's nothing there and we would just go by whatever. Our academic standards are and those things.
I have a little concern in terms of number three too, because I think there is a lot of, um, research that indicates that. That sports can be really critical for kids who struggle. And so I'm not totally in favor of building in academic requirements, and maybe we already have them in policy, but I kind of like the idea of leaving that. A little bit flexible so that if that's sort of the only thing it has going for them, that.
We could strike three, but I like that there's number four.
Are you talking about roman numeral two?
No, academic, alright, I was thinking, you're in the academic, okay.
See, JJA, yep, does reference academic standards in order to be.
So I thought we had.
Yeah, somewhere.
Yeah. What is it, JJ?
Yeah, JJN.
Thank you.
Welcome.
And that's all the extracurricular and folk curricular, so that's your intramurals and.
That's where the.
Yeah, yeah.
Something, yeah, okay. Well, I mean, I also, like I said at the beginning, I'd be in favor of adopting a policy that. That was very simple and said that we. We operated under the guidance of the NHIA. So that. So that we're always in, you know. Eligible to play against other teams that also do that. And that way we're not like baking anything in. So we would keep that might be in conflict with it.
Eligibility, section A, would you also keep B with the change? Registration form, parental consent form.
Those all things we already do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I think it's also like. It gives us a guideline to what we need to have too.
Yeah. And with. Did you say with or without four?
I would say with four, but take out that whole part about such evidence may include.
Do you really think we need to have birth certificate?
That's what the law.
Yeah.
It is.
Okay, it's not.
Yeah, that's the only thing, yeah.
I would take out the word original, but. I also, I mean, there's a lot of reasons kids have different birth certificates. Yeah.
But does not appear to be, who's the arbiter?
Yeah. I don't know, I just, I think there's a lot of faces and which. You know, like, my, I've adopted both of my kids, so neither of my kids' birth certificates are original. Does that mean I have to go and like seek out my. Kid who was a foster child and find their original birth certificate? That seems a little extreme.
Again, that does not appear to be is right out of the law.
It doesn't, the original part?
It is or isn't right out of the law.
The does not appear to be, the student's. Is in the law. That's language straight out of.
That's terrible language for a law. So it says, the law says, I don't have it up, it says, it says original birth certificate, and then it says if it does not.
If it does not appear to be, if a birth certificate provided by a student, pursuant paragraph three. Does not appear to be the original or does not.
You doing carbon dating?
Then the student must provide other evidence in indicating that, indicating the student's sex at time of birth, the student or student may, must pay any costs associated. So that's where I was saying such evidence may include. Can be struck.
Yeah, although then who determines whether the evidence is. And that's, I don't want it in there, but I'm just wondering, like, again, back to.
I think that's the point at which it's a, it's an administrative decision, yeah.
And then we get back to. Proving whether it's. Born when we're.
Did anybody see the movie Call Enclave?
Yeah.
That movie?
That was very good.
I, we shouldn't spoil the ending, but it pertains to this conversation.
Really, yeah, talks about gender markers and.
Yeah.
It's interesting.
Watch it if you have a chance. It's kind of boring getting through the whole thing.
Oh, but it's beautiful.
Yeah, it's funny. So are we gonna strike that line about such evidence?
I would take anything that isn't in, in the law specifically.
Alright, and so we're gonna strike such evidence may include. All the way through biological sex and birth, and we're gonna leave the last sentence, the student or student's parent regarding must pay costs. Cause that's in the law.
Do we have? Currently. Girls who are participating in boys' sports. Not any cases of that right now.
I think I've heard on the news that it's only three in the state of New Hampshire, so not something that happened.
That's true, I'm, I'm talking about definitely different, which is like. Superly boring. Born female, identifies cis. And, but won't play baseball.
I don't think that there are cases, I'm not aware of any. So we're gonna keep section C on the physical, making sure they have a physical. Well, we ought to really do that. Section D, we're gonna keep the academic piece, except for one will, will get struck. Two will become one and then we're. Getting rid of number three, if you said, the transfer students.
Don't believe that. That there's no. At the middle school or the high school. You don't have.
I think that because it's a non-issue for us.
Yeah.
So we probably don't even know.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? I think that's more likely.
Well, I just know that, I mean, like in Little League, there's plenty of girls out there pitching because like, yeah. Yeah, so I just, uh. And like, even at the middle, I can't believe at the middle school level, they're not like, yeah.
Not aware of that.
Yeah.
So academic, we're gonna strike number one? And we said transfer students, we're gonna just get rid of that.
Oh, you know what's so weird is I didn't even understand that that was. I kind of missed, I totally missed the first word, I just thought it was students. Any students. And their GPA. Wow, that's fair, okay.
How do we? What would we do with the transfer student? Right now, we're, I think we're just including folks who want to play because it's a good way to build culture, to build. Community and belonging.
And what if they're coming from other, some other school where. They have bad GPA for some reason, we don't know, like, yeah, I think it's. Okay, so strike it personally.
Alright, so we'll get rid of three, so number two becomes one. Number four becomes three. Number five becomes. No, number four becomes two, jeez Louise, number five becomes three, there's too many numbers. Okay. Now, what do we do about H? Are we gonna take that out? Because this is all saying something different than.
No, you're in a different policy.
I know, but it's still in eight.
We're not touching JBAB.
Right, we agreed not to do that, okay.
Still wonder about the, the language, a special ed education student. I feel like maybe we should do like the person first language and now student. Special education or. Student with.
A student with an IEP? Change that to a student with an IEP. Working for a special diploma here. Change it in the second sentence, a student with an IEP.
Anything else under academic? Pulling out his. Were they designated?
We have pretty. Explanations of what happens with academics, with athletes, correct, and discipline, I'm supposing. That two is the part that directly speaks to the law.
Maybe, I, I think I would like to, if it said. In. Compliance with. RSA, whatever, whatever. First, like, if that's how we started this sentence.
Compliance with RSA one ninety-two forty-one. Yeah, in compliance. With RSA. One ninety-three colon forty-one. Each interscholastic team shall be designated. I hate to say this, but did I hear that that, that that law is gonna, is being updated or changed or. It's not on the books right now, there's nothing on there right now? As far as in conversation, it, it's already a law, I don't think you're making any.
Any.
I don't think that this one's getting adjusted, there might be something else, but not this one.
Okay.
Three severability, I think that that's. Put that in there, if anything is invalid. That it stands, so we suddenly decide that. Thing changes.
I don't know if I feel, like, we need all that, again, like, we need all that language in your number two. I mean, like I said, I, it feels transphobic to me, I don't know, I wanna say teams for boys, I mean. I don't know.
Each interscholastic team approved by the school board for any of grades five to twelve shall be designated as boys, girls, or coed.
Yeah, and I think it's better than having the rest of it. Uh, could we say that line and then comma? Or something, something about like, we. We adhere to the guidance of the NHIA or something.
Sports teams will.
Yeah.
Establish under their guidelines.
Yeah.
So the second sentence could be teams will be. Established. Following the guidelines. NHIA. And then get rid of designate for boys. Leave the following sentence because it references an earlier section. I would leave that the coed teams are open to both.
Funny there, it says all sexes.
I think, I think there's, I think there's a, there's a conflict in what happened in twenty-fourth HB twelve-five. And. This policy was just saying that you can't have. Cis girls playing in boys' sports. I don't think that's the case. And I, I'm, let me keep researching, but I'm like. Cause I think that the target of HB twelve-five is trans. And, uh, it's different than what the way that that. Cause I think that the target of HB twelve-five is trans and uh it's different than what the way that that. Um, policy reads. Um, and I'm not good with moving forward with that policy the way it reads because it's. It is prohibitive of cis girls playing in uh in which would be in. Uh, conflict with title line, just generally.
Well, um, I agree with you, I'm not fearful of this, that's written either.
Are you talking about two?
Yeah, yeah, because I think there are, those cases happen in the state, they're happening now, there's examples of them in the state right now. It don't, and I think that's in direct conflict with that practice, and so I think the policy, we should do a little bit of due diligence. To make sure that the policy is reflective of current practice around cis girls in men's sports where there is another offering, baseball, football, things like that.
And would you appreciate that? From the state of the standpoint and everything else, but would you do it the other way as well? This males in girl's sports?
No. Yeah, just because I don't think uh I don't think there is.
Cheerleading or.
Well, cheerleading is coed. Yeah, I'm sure it is, yeah, yeah.
I don't know.
Yeah, I think, I think there's, there's sort of a couple levels to that, I think, um, I think just. I don't wanna, I don't wanna pass any, I don't wanna put anything that in policy. That's more restrictive than we absolutely have to be by law, it's sort of like how I'm approaching the the problems face. Um, and I don't think the, I think current practice and law allows for cis girls in boy's sports. And I didn't want, I wouldn't want to actively restrict that if we don't have to.
So are you okay with the? Line, which says teams will be established following the guidelines of NHIAA? Okay.
Sorry, can I say something? It opting not to adopt this section, so do you actually need to have this section?
The 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 two section?
Yeah, yeah, because it's saying if you're not going to, then just basically renumber. And then the, like what I'm hearing you guys saying, if you reference their end note, like. Definitely don't like the end, which that's associated with that. Which is on the first page.
Yeah, this is always the other way around.
Part two B, athletic teams or sports, does it mean? Women or girls shall not be open to students of the male sex.
Yeah, so it's the other, so the end note is backwards, isn't it? Does it prohibits males from playing on teams, does it gain for females?
Yeah, this is guy, I. Yeah, I agree, only prohibits. I just like, like, to be perfectly candid, no one's out there making those laws, that's prohibiting females from playing on. It's just not happening.
No, I, and I know, I've read that. Read that, of that law and that whole thing. So I think the end note is incorrect.
So I think we can just strike two entirely.
Yeah, but then we're addressing the law. I mean, not that I'm advocating that we do, I'm just saying that that's still a reason we're.
If not, no, I don't think we.
Can we just say teams will be established according to the guidelines?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, so what am I doing?
So you're gonna leave in compliance with RSA, each interschoolastic shall be designated, boys, girls, or coed, teams will be established following guidelines of NHIAA, that's it.
I don't think we even need the first sentence anymore.
Yep.
Okay, sorry.
In compliance, we don't even need that?
I I don't know, I mean, I think that's what Nancy's saying, right? Like, you're just saying, why don't we just stick with what the, what the, yeah, guidelines of the NHIAA.
Alright, so part two.
Yeah.
Teams will be established.
Teams will be established.
Following the guidelines.
Okay.
Of NHIAA, period, that's it, that's all section two.
That's, yeah, that's what I. Do we need a title for section two though?
No, not to my knowledge.
Wait, what?
They each have a little title. I would just call it as teams for middle and high school.
Teams for middle, middle and high school? And then strike everything out.
Yep, yep.
Is that separability, I think we can leave that, all that says is if something gets removed, the rest of it stands, so if we suddenly decide we don't. Don't want a participation fee, everything else stays. Um, records will be kept.
Should should records, should it be added or designated?
Yes.
That's just the fact that we're all with everything, nothing.
So that got through what we were hoping to get done today.
We can review them for next time.
So for the next, we're meeting, we're taking due MCC, the way we've. First reading?
Yep.
And we're still punting on JBAV GLP, barring the June legislation, sort of like fallout.
Yep. And then next time we can talk about calendar. And then talk about.
I would like to for both dress code and cell phones or devices. I would really like to invite the public to to have some input on both of those. And particularly the the communication devices one. So it might be another one that's happening, not been.
Yeah, we might know that by June fifth.
Yeah. But I think.
This is the only time it's like what the governor's gonna sign.
Yeah, because it has some missing things. Uh, so, but I think it would be worth starting the conversation now with the community. Because, I mean, we just got a message last week about cell phones, you know, I think there's, people are, they know this is coming and that they're. Discuss it, so I'm I'm wondering. What the best method of doing that is, whether it's like. I don't, I mean, maybe you're right, maybe there's not a lot we can do if we get a.
And get something from. Cell phones, yes, but then the student dress code, I know that there's. Sean Donovan gave me some stuff about from the high school, I think it would be worth a conversation. Maybe Zach and I have with the administrators, maybe that's something we look at this summer. Because I don't think there's any way shape or form we're gonna be able to. June eleventh, please, no, like, there's no way, um, but to have conversation about what that looks like while we also maybe reach out to. The families, yeah. I uh, I hate to say this word, it's. Swear word, it was by survey or something. To see what, how they would weigh in about dress code. And what we would want, because I know. There was a very specific method, I think, that was used to develop the current high school dress code that. I think the mayor at that point was involved in it, and it had to do with wearing baseball hats in school, Sean's got the whole backstory.
They're currently in a bunch of baseball hats.
Yeah, but it was all because of this big coalition that was pulled together, that the mayor was involved in, it was, but but it's also. That old, like, you can think back to when baseball hats were a problem.
It's also not very explicit, I mean, that's the thing is I I felt like it's so, it's so subjective in some ways. And I think that probably makes it hard to.
And that's where I think having a conversation maybe with the administrators in one of our meetings, coming up maybe this summer. Zach and I can collect some. Information or anecdotes, maybe have an opportunity for some of those folks to come in September. Or in the fall to talk to us about, this is what we're seeing for issues, this is. What we would like support with, because a lot of times as an administrator, you're looking at policy to support you. In what you need to do, and if you're saying something, and it's like, well, it's not in writing anywhere, you're just, you're just saying that, cause this is what you think, it's like, well, no, not really.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, I and I and I think dress code. I think I'd like some input from the students too.
Yeah, the day Lisa and I did the um student government day, we asked the students, and they were critical of the way some kids show up.
Really?
Dressed at school, you know, particularly the girls that wear their lingerie rather than clothes. And that's one of, that's one of the concerns that comes up with the high school is like, yeah, like, put some clothes on, a lot of. Not so much like slogans or language, but like certain times of, you know, what could be popular, like language unfolding and. It could be offensive and.
I think um, I I would maybe say like, at this point, I don't think a survey, unless, I think surveying students might be helpful, but I don't know that we need to survey families. I mean, unless we're, you know, doing uniforms or something, I don't know, we really need their input, but um, yeah, would you do that in the fall? Get the student, but probably because at this point, they're checked out.
Well, at this point, we're running, total aside, I don't think you do a policy, but we have the um. Focus area three survey going on right now with our students. So that's, that's very concerning, so there's, yeah, so we don't wanna over. Oversurvey them, what is this now? I don't wanna answer this question.
No, I think it makes sense to wait, um, but I do think it would be great for us to schedule a conversation with the, with the administrators.
So Zach and I can do some pre-work and then have maybe, maybe by October, cause by that point, things have. Quote unquote settled down in the building, it's not that they ever do, but to have administrators come in and just give opinion or something. As we continue to build out that policy, dress code and then. Sure, by then, we hope we will have a pile of stuff from. Big update to look at, Paula and I'll be frying and nerdy again, all the, all the things we've gotta do, so.
So in terms of cell phones, then we'll wait to see what the legislation does and then maybe. Early fall, we schedule some sort of like forum or something.
If they, they, if they pass it. Sometimes they give like a grace period for actually enacting it in schools, especially with stuff like that. So they might give three months, they might give a year, so there might be time for us to collect, like, okay, here's what it says. What we want that to look like.
Right.
Which would be nice, instead of just like, here it is, put it in practice. Sometimes it's harder.
Alright, anything else? So we'll, we'll probably be dealing with the fall update, I mean, spring update at the next meeting.
So you're talking about all?
We still have AI on there, and I do, I mean, I know. There's a, there's current discussion just in the country at the moment about like teachers using AI and how that is and. And students getting in trouble for it still or not getting trouble. It's very broad.
Yeah.
Discussion, so I don't know Byron, if you have more critiques on. How we may narrow that conversation or whether it's, are you hearing from administrators or teachers that it's necessary to?
There's, there's two sides of it, there's the instructional piece of it, which there's stuff coming out left, right, and center. It's, it reminds me of like when the internet first hit the classroom and like there's all this stuff and everything's interesting and fun and then. You're kind of sitting there waiting for which company is gonna survive and what what's gonna be left to use. Um, and then there's the the student consideration where are they really writing the paper, are they, like, what are you?
The, yeah, like, generally, like, my biggest concern is that if. It is, is such an easy thing to use in terms of um getting around demonstrating your understanding of concepts. So like, that would be like my biggest thing is that we need to, if if we could somehow codify. It as not being. Allowable by students as a way of demonstrating understanding, I think that's, I'd be in favor of that.
So maybe it belongs in sort of our plagiarism um policy.
But then there's also the responsible use of it, and like my concerns sometimes with these open systems of. Things that you're putting in are continuously training that system. And what are you, like, there are times to go in there, and can you summarize for me, like?
Yeah, no.
What would be your responsible use for that and making sure that we have that spelled?
Like, I don't, I I think taking it away from students would be the same thing as bringing them advocates instead of calculators, I think that like, uh, that that's. Like, the analogy.
What is the responsible use, right, that's what we have to play that for.
Yeah, I think it should be, but, but my, my personal take on it, the policy is that. Um, it's a wildly powerful tool that everyone should be using. Um, but that is a, it should not be used as a way of demonstrating a student's understanding of the concept.
Report on the tale to city, no, 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 read the tale to.
I mean, honestly, like, if if you get there by summarizing and then like generating your own Cliff Notes. Using that as a tool instead of like reading the whole book and like you can like demonstrate through traditional themes, your understanding of the real concept, like.
Good for you for being efficient. About your school on Cliff Notes. Yeah, I think um, so. So I think it's worth a discussion, and I think we could probably come up with some parameters.
Yeah.
And to see too, if there's stuff that's. Out there about student use of AI and, because I'm sure that there were other states. Grappling with this and coming out with. Policy. Papers.
Yeah, and it's gonna be tough, cause it's gonna become integral to, it's gonna be sort of integral to all the other tools. So. Spell check, if you say like, through the right, yeah, there's always like various tools that feel such you're using. And once that's like, that's the technology describing that tool, and you're trying to like restrict policy, it's, yeah, yeah.
So I would say if we don't have it on um. I mean, if depending on what our load looks like from the spring update, I think we should try to work that one in soon to start talking about. Cause I think the, the important part is that people are responding to it consistently, and there's inconsistent understanding of how it's okay to use it. Cause I think putting each teacher in the position of having to decide that is not really fair.
So what do you want the June eleventh agenda to look like? What are?
Well, I think it depends on how big the spring update is.
JBAV and JLT?
Probably again, yep. ICA definitely, I think we can hit that one.
Do you think we'll know cell phone?
Probably the cell phones.
We might know it, but what? So first phone AI.
I was gonna say, but realistically, do you think we'll get through those? Yeah, because we do, I think we, so we have, just so everybody knows. We have July ninth as the meeting after, and then nothing scheduled beyond that, so. We may have to think about adding either more time. I just have concerns because the spring update isn't out and we don't know what it's gonna look like, it's usually later than the fall, which is good. But I don't wanna put us too far behind coming into the fall that we're not even looking at the fall update until January. But I don't know if we, I I don't know.
Or we could schedule two meetings that month, I hate to do that in July.
I know.
So is everybody here July ninth?
Okay.
So maybe, are we gonna follow the same pattern that we're gonna do the Wednesday after the first board meeting?
I would like to get away from that because I feel like, for me anyway, I'm, I'm not fresh. I'm frightened of the night, if I, if we could go to the opposite Wednesday.
Well, that's what we did today, correct?
Yeah, I mean, I I kind of like it that it's not right after a board meeting.
So July ninth, there's not a board meeting the night before, correct?
There is, there is.
Oh, on on July eighth?
We have one in July. Unfortunately, I'm not here, I'm sixteen. And that's during our retreat, so we could, I mean, we could do July second. Paulette's not here, but I could take notes. Unless we. Boot the July one and do another one in June. To do June eighteenth.
Do two hours in a row.
Okay, but then what are we gonna discuss? Because. Are we still?
We may not have.
Right? Is the.
Right, June, June fifth is the legislature's supposed to finalize everything.
So would we have it?
I think what we could do for the June. Well, what if we did this? What if we looked at June? Fourth. To talk about the school calendar, because we know that that exists and that's not, we're not waiting for them to make a decision.
I'm not available.
How about, alright, then how about the eleventh? And we do the school calendar.
Okay.
On the eleventh, and we talk about. We start a conversation on JBAV. And if we need more time, we have it on the eighteen. And then we also see. We will not have had time to talk to the, um, administrators about dress code. I can't do the eighteenth, I'm having cataracts.
Oh, jeez.
They do one eye and then they, two weeks later, they do the next eye. So I have the, the.
My dad had that, but he raised that it.
Oh, good.
Cause it's the best thing he's ever done.
I hope it works good. Thanks for telling me that.
And he said it was super easy too.
Um, so the eighteenth, so that's why I'm not free on the, um. Well, maybe we just do a longer meeting on the eleventh than we do the calendar, JBAV. What do you think, a two hour meeting?
Yep. Can we go earlier versus extending to later?
I think so. Can we start at the tenth noon? Byron, I can do two.
Ten eleven, ten to noon.
Yep.
Okay, okay.
Then we'll just see.
Yeah. And if we, maybe if we need to make our July ninth.
Maybe we can cancel. Okay, by then, we still won't have the spring update.
Oh, who knows?
Yeah.
Hopefully, I mean.
I just.
I think they've just been consumed in everything that's going on.
Alright.
Thanks, everybody.
I, I give you this. I was with the New Hampshire Housing People the other day and they gave me this.